I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mrs. Hatfield, will you please? Well, actually, this is the Olentangie Board of Education regular meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 9th, and we are in the administrative offices Berlin Room. Mrs. Hatfield, will you call the roll? Yes. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Speel.
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
That was delayed.
Will you please join us as we pledge allegiance?
She's becoming a rule model.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now take a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended. We are fast tonight. Call the roll, please. Speel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. And we would like to welcome Mr. Randy Wright for his community engagement report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share with you our annual community engagement report. This is our third such report, and this is the typical time during the summer when we have been able to gather all the things that have been going on or did go on in the building for the 17, 18 school year. This is a highlight from Benchmark 8 of our district CIP, and we're looking for high community engagement and stakeholder satisfaction. And this is the annual report from principals to the superintendent's office and then shared with you. So as we look at it, as I said, it's our third formal presentation. We have looked at five categories for the past three years. Enrichment or informational, those that are just opportunities for parents to gain information from specific buildings. Cultural, which will be celebrations of art or multiculturalism or music. Then we have service projects from our students that connect and our staff that connects back to the community. Community connections, and this is opportunities to engage with not direct parents of the students in that building. So if they're reaching out to community members or to a broader audience than just their building population, we look at that as a community connection. And then celebration, your typical opportunities for parties to get in and connect or honorary events such as Students of the Month, breakfasts, things like that. So those are the categories that we have used. I was asked this time last year to add an additional category because we were anticipating all of the unfolding of our redistricting plan. I was asked to track or have our principals track transitional planning as well. So we have baseline. I don't know that we'll have ongoing information in that regard because we won't be redistricting for a little while. At least five years, as rumor has it. That is not true. I don't want this tape turned around. We will redistrict.
People might hold you to that. Be careful.
Correct. We will redistrict when it's appropriate.
Right.
This data is collected from all levels, elementary, middle, and high, and includes our Olentangie Academy and Oasis program. Again, this year, the data is submitted by the building principals who have tracked it at their buildings. So numbers, and then in parentheses at the end of each of these lines are the numbers from last year. We did have an average of 28 events per building, so you can see that it up slightly. And we're up slightly in all but, I think, one category throughout this. So you see the three levels, 448 at the elementary, again, 15 buildings doing that, 120 at the middle school level, and then big growth there at the high school as well. The information themselves, again, up in each of these categories. The biggest jump, I want to make sure that I looked at it was correct, was the enrichment or informational. And so I think our principals have gotten a better idea of when we're hosting a meeting to inform parents, we've engaged with our community. So it's information that they're providing to us. I think they're getting a better understanding of the many things that they do which do fall under the category of connecting with the community. We're always very proud of our service opportunities, 135. I would say that this is nowhere near accurate because of what our kids do at the buildings and the fundraisers and the way. I just don't think our principals, it's like the kids. They just do the work, and so our principals, they don't see it as a need to be something to track and record. So this is in no way tracks across 26 buildings what we're really doing in our service opportunities. Celebration is the one where we drop down, which not like we had less things to celebrate this year. Again, I think as they look at what are they turning in for information as well. So then you see at the bottom of this slide, the transitional planning. So there were 46 events, and the principals, those were official scheduled opportunities for parents and students, or both, that are coming to new buildings to be able to come and meet the principals toward the facilities. What this doesn't include, and I know Mr. Spinner is here tonight, the countless individual conversations our building principals had with nervous families, nervous children, many larger groups, just to try and ease the anxiety that may be associated with our transition. So we were very pleased to share that as a result of this extensive work at the building level. I did not receive a call or an email from a concerned family that they were unhappy with the transitional planning or what they were receiving at the building level. So while there was a tremendous amount of discord throughout the process about various aspects, when it came down to it, our administrators, our counselors, and the teachers that work in each of these buildings made this very successful for our clientele. So that is the information I have to report. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
I have several. Great. So you will be reporting at our next board meeting on the calendar feedback?
That is correct.
Okay. And as far as the transitional meetings go, Mr. Spinner might be able to speak to this, did that include all those meetings where you had, they met the coaches, and are those over and above that number?
Those would be over and above. He didn't, again, he only tracked a couple of things which were his big events. I know just from the emails that went through me that I would filter to him that the number of meetings he then set up to meet with parents.
It seemed like a lot.
And I would measure that in the dozens.
Yeah, I met weekly with different groups of parents, all positive.
Well, Joe, there was a lot on Twitter.
Yes.
Of events that was going on.
So the answer to that is stop following Twitter.
Well, I would think, I don't follow Twitter. It just pops up on my phone. I don't use it.
Okay. I can't help you.
Does anybody else have any questions regarding? Thank you for tracking that.
It's good information.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's good. This celebration, because everyone's angry about holidays.
For my board president's report, I had like a 20-minute or so. No, I'm kidding. I'm not going to, I don't have a board president's report for this evening because not too much has happened since we last met, other than I had about a week-long migraine. So I have, the only thing that I noticed today was Julie posted about a former Olentangie student that has left Cal State Berkeley.
Berkeley.
To do, he got a grant.
Yep.
To do a drone.
His own business with the drone.
I am excited to see where that goes.
Yeah.
Very neat. Very, very cool. That's about as much as I've been on social media this week. Okay, Mr. Rafe, well, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening to all our regulars. Always nice to have you with us. So as we like to start off with good things, the move-in has started at Berlin High School. There is a rumor that the person in the bear suit is Mr. Spinner. I don't know if he wants to confirm or deny that. That's one of the life-size bears getting moved in. There's a lot of work still to be done, but I have great confidence we will be ready August 5th for the grand opening and for the start of school. So anything else, Mr. Spinner?
You did a good job. No, thank you.
I have a question. What's the bear's name? I'm sorry.
So that will be decided by the students.
Oh. Like they have Pioneer Pete, we'll have something bear.
All right. Looking forward to it. Was that one of those 105-degree days in the bear suit?
It probably was.
Because I'm not sure that kid's going to be looking forward to getting into the bear suit.
I'll make sure that it's not a double XL. It's a smaller person.
We have one discussion item on the agenda. Our curriculum director, Mrs. McMurray, will be giving you an update on a pretty significant math purchase, ST math, and she has great information to share on that topic. Couple agenda items to highlight. We do have one administrative appointment, Allison Halls, who was an intervention specialist at Liberty High School, former, actually, an Olentangie High School graduate.
Yep.
Has been, will be one of Mr. Starnes' new assistant principals. We approved Mr. Starnes at our last meeting. He's here to meet the board tonight.
Welcome.
Mike is with us. Couple other big items on there, tennis court resurfacing at Olentangie and Liberty High School, the district athletic service contract with Ohio State. We've been negotiating with them about extending our contract. We've been very happy with their services. They've offered to extend the contract. Needed to amend it for the final year as we add Berlin High School. We've also made a couple amendments to how we're using the sports performance coaches because actually we're using them more than what we initially contracted with them. So as the athletic departments go over and above what we originally decided the contract for, they'll be paying for that as they go. But that just cleans up the language, so we have no discrepancy about what the services will be provided. We're still getting the same level of service, and it locks us in for five years and at no cost. So I think that's a good thing for us moving forward. And then we have the ST math purchase. So as I said, Mrs. McMurray will be explaining that. Couple important dates coming up. Obviously, as I mentioned, the ribbon-cutting ceremony, August 5th, will start at 12:30. The stadium with a parade around the building to start at 1 o'clock with, we've got Krista and Mr. Spinner have been working on the arrangements for that. Going to have a significant number of Friends of Berlin, the old Berlin High School graduates will be there, so that'll be a great opportunity to connect with some of our longstanding community members. So we're really looking forward to that. And then the business session, August 9th, back here one month from now. We only take a month off in the summer unlike legislators.
Right.
Questions?
I have a question on the sports contract. Just to reiterate, we didn't open it up for any bids because there's no cost to the district to do this.
Yeah, and at this time, again, we do want the continuity. We feel really, the transition to OSHU has been really strong. We've got great trainers in all the buildings. They, you know, they're committed to continuing to make that partnership grow. I think there are even more opportunities for our kids to get involved in research opportunities, to get involved in internship opportunities. They're just a tremendous resource that we're going to continue to tap into. And, you know, I really appreciate what they've done to make this work. And it's been, you know, again, and our kids don't have to use their doctors, they don't have to use their, there's no requirement for that. I think it's encouraged, but, you know, that's how they make the deal work for them.
As a consumer of the services, my daughter went through it quite a bit. I mean, it's really good, strong. You get preferential scheduling, you get access to great doctors, it's been the greatest good.
And I think it'll only improve as they put a facility, you know, on the west side, because they're supposed to be putting a big facility right in Liberty High School. So that'll only make it even better.
That would be hard not to take advantage of if you're at Liberty and you're injured to go across the street.
Well, I know our Olentangie kids are doing therapy at the place next, you know, in the Kroger strip.
Yeah, down.
Yeah. It's so.
And the sports performance piece has really, really been. Our coaches have really embraced that.
I know my husband uses a nutritionist for his team, not himself.
Oh, really?
I need to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are laughing, yes.
Now, my son is doing conditioning this summer, and I couldn't be more pleased.
Good.
Yes. Actually, I saw his lacrosse summer, like he improved doing his other sport because he's doing the conditioning, so. Mrs. Hatfield, your treasures report, please.
Hello. I have some great news to share. We wanted to take an opportunity to come to the podium. I don't do that very often for our regular treasures report, but we have some updates from the Orange Middle School eighth-grade Washington DC trip donations. As you may remember, our eighth-grade students take a trip to Washington DC. It is a student-paid trip, and the Orange Middle School contracted with Discovery Tours. Shortly after, about three weeks or so before the trip, we discovered that they had not paid some of their bills, and soon after, we learned that the company actually went bankrupt, and so the trip was at stake. And the students were in jeopardy of not being able to go because they had not paid some of those bills. So we worked with Mr. Cunningham and Mrs. Davis and contacted Prodigy Travel. They are another company that the other middle schools used, and so we were able to work with them to secure the trip. The students were able to go. And Prodigy was also a very great partner, not only in working fast to make sure that the reservations and the itinerary was secured for the students, but they also donated services back to the district for that. And so overall, this is a great list of all of our community members, staff members. We have Student Council and Class of 2018 from Orange High School that donated. Just a tremendous amount of support from staff, community members, and our local partners. And so we wanted to be able to say thank you to them and kind of present them in a way that was spitting to all of the support that they gave us through this process. At this time, we have an estimated billing coming in from Prodigy for $148,882. As we said, they donated a big portion of that back to the district, a little over $50,000 in services rendered and things that they were able to secure at no cost for the trip. Collections to date are just over $114,000 between donations and a few student payments. And so right now, we're at a balance of a little over $34,600 that the district has paid out of pocket for the trip thus far. We have recommended that families, if they paid via credit card, to dispute those charges on their credit card. They've received that information at the building level. So as they work through that process of disputing charges and getting those funds back, we may see more funds coming in from direct payment at that time. But this is where we are to date. So overall, I think, you know, we were very pleased that we were able to secure the trip for the students and allow them to take part in that trip. It's a great, great field trip for them and a great learning experience to go to DC and see the Capitol and all of those learning experiences that they get to be a part of. Other than that, on the board agenda, we have a few fiscal 2019 appropriation changes, which may seem a little early, but they are really just updating a couple of grant proposals that we received. We got more information after we did the final appropriations at our last board meeting for this fiscal year. And so we're updating those budget numbers to reflect the actual awards that were received. And then, of course, we have our minutes as a procedural item to improvements from the May 14th meeting and the June, or, excuse me, May 17th and June 14th meetings. Are there any questions?
No, thank you. I do want to, I'm very impressed with the class of 2018 at Orange High School donating that amount of money to the ones coming behind them.
That just was really cool. They just stepped right up.
Yeah.
Hesitate.
I think that it's amazing, like, I work for the Delaware County Foundation, and philanthropy has changed significantly through the years, and the way really to reach young kids is as a group. Because as a group, they're impressive and they step up.
Yes, very. Very, very blasting and, you know, pleased with their graciousness. I mean, they just, no hesitation, called over and said, "We would like to do this out of our fund." So the full list and details of those dollar amounts are in the minutes for today's agenda.
Thank you for those. You're welcome. Mrs. Hatfield, do we have any public participation?
No, we do not.
Okay. Well, next, we'd like to welcome Mrs. Peggy McMurray, our Director of Curriculum, and I'm very excited for this presentation on ST math.
Yeah, I am too.
Because my son uses this program.
My niece uses it, and she is only, well, she's going to be a fourth grader, but she refers to it as ST math. Like, that's the name, you know, like, that's what she calls it.
So I can probably go ahead and sit down.
Yeah. No. I've seen it in action.
I don't have a picture of Gigi on here, but tonight I do present to you information about ST math. It's a program that we've used, you know, a little bit in the district, but, you know, we're looking forward to making a bigger purchase for more students to use. And the reason that we are looking really for a program is that for the past couple of years, we've realized that we really don't have a really good, solid, research-based math program for various students. We know that we have a lot of resources for our students that are perhaps struggling readers or that need some additional reading support. We found that we were lacking in the area for math. And really, we wanted to identify a great resource that would really narrow our focus because we know that there are hundreds of resources for math out there. We wanted to pick a really good one for our students. And what we found, as you've alluded to, is ST math. ST stands for Spatial-Temporal, and that's the region of your brain that holds your short-term memory. It's where you hold your visual memory, your mental representations, and then by holding that in your short-term memory, it allows you to manipulate that information, and then you can think multiple steps ahead. So it really helps with your thinking process. The beauty of ST math, and those of you who are familiar with it know that it's really visual to symbolic, and that it provides visual animation of this Gigi. Your point is to get this penguin across the stage, and you hear the ding. It's really a very pleasant sound. You don't hear anything if you don't get it right, but it's really nice to hear that nice ding when you do solve the problem or the puzzle, if you will. It's free of language and symbols. So once, though, that the concept is mastered, then it will gradually reintroduce your symbols and your language and your words back into a program so that it really is not a barrier for struggling readers because there's so much language in math. You know, think about a word problem. If you can't read, you can't figure it out. So it's a really nice way. The developer of this, Dr. Matthew Peterson, he has a really unique story. You can search him on YouTube and hear his unique story with ST math. So what we did then was, for a couple of years, we dabbled, if you will, with ST math. And in 2016, 17, we identified two buildings to pilot ST math, K-5, Arrowhead, and Heritage. And based on teacher report and their teacher created assessments, looking at their, them looking at their AMES web data, and then just student observation of students, they found that it really was working and that they felt that their students had a firmer grasp of math concepts by using ST math. That was in 1617. Then this past year, we did a purchase for students in all of the buildings, and I worked with principals, and we provided them information on their AMES web data at the beginning of the year, as well as their previous year OST data and teacher recommendation, and asked them to select students who they felt would benefit from using ST math. And so I think in a previous memo that I provided that there were some good information about students who improved, those who used ST math. So what I'd like to do and to ask for your approval tonight is to purchase additional seats, 6,390 seats. And I met in the spring, how I came up with that number is, we met in this, I met in the spring with all the elementary principals and said, "How many do you think you need? Based on your AMES web data, based on usage, based on your conversations with teachers, I want to provide this for you, and I want you to use it." So they provided a number to me. They gave their rationale for why they selected that number. They've given me an implementation plan of what they will do, how they will implement that, as well as how they're going to monitor the usage of this. Because as we know with any program, you have to really monitor the use. Who's using it? And what does the, what do the reports from ST math tell us about the students? Where do you need to modify? Some additional work for students, or where do you need to have conversations? I noticed that you're struggling with this. Let's talk about this. So principals have told me how they will be doing that. And as well as with the purchase, we'll receive additional training for staff. So that's it.
Yeah.
If you want to know or learn more about it, I'll be happy to provide a demo to you privately on ST math, and you'll get to see up in personal Gigi who have across the stage.
So it won't be, so not every student will use it, only selected students?
Right, selected students. Some buildings, though, have had, have selected to have most of their students use it. Other buildings have said, "You know what? I want these students to use it because we have this other product that we find that is working well." And nothing could replace good and great classroom instruction. You know, many of them will use it as they roll it out in their station-rotation model with some technology that they have coming up. So principals are going to decide how and when they'll use that in the building with what students.
Go ahead. I got one, too, so you go.
Yeah, well, I've seen it at home. Actually, it took me quite a while to crack what I was supposed to be doing, but I didn't get any verbal instruction. So do the kids receive verbal instruction at school?
Teachers can do a demo, like a class demo, and say, "Okay, today we're talking about spatial relations." And one of the puzzles, if you will, that comes to mind is where you have to turn, you see Gigi one way and you see her another way, and then you have to decide how you're going to turn her or flip her to get her in her new direction. And so teachers can walk students through, they can do a demo on the site, has a demo site, Boys and Girls, where today we're going to talk about this. Let's talk briefly how you might do this and how you might tackle this problem. And so you can, you can do a demo, you can do it whole group, you can do a small group. If you see some students are having difficulty with one particular concept, you can log in and just address that concept with students. So typically, no, but it's interesting that kids figure it out. Kids can figure it out. There.
It took me 30 minutes for fractions. It took me.
You know, what I have to say, when I demoed with some of the principals, there were some, "I just can't figure this out."
I couldn't figure out the game.
My niece will show it to me, and I can't figure it out, but she goes, she knows how to solve it.
Yeah, they know right what to do.
And the beauty of it is, is after kids have used it, they can usually talk about it. Well, if you do this, this, and this.
Yes. She'll give me the directions.
And they're accessing that Spatial-Temporal region of their brain. And so it really opens up for them. They've learned how to access that and then be able to verbalize it.
I'm just going to ask quick. So it's K through 5, so what happens at 6?
We did, we use it in some middle schools this past year. The middle schools weren't as favorable on it as the elementary schools. They, it does have access, they can. They weren't as, like I said, they weren't as high on it as K through 5. And then we did have some high school students use it, a couple students, about 20 or so students used it at the high school level. They, ST math is created by Mind Research Institute. They are in the process of developing ST programs for Algebra I students. You know, I would be interested in taking a look at that down the road as we know that some students continue to struggle with Algebra I, and that's something that we need to make sure that they have so that they can continue on with their education.
Just a couple comments. I'm really glad to see that you went through a progression of steps.
Thank you.
To get to this point, to ask for a recommendation.
Thank you.
You really thoroughly went through it. And what caught my attention in your presentation was, is you said to the principals, "Give me your list and give me your rationale, and how are you going to deal with it, and what's the results?" That's almost verbatim what the Olentangie Education Foundation does when teachers turn in their grant requests. They have to answer very similar questions and process. So I thought that was interesting.
Great, thank you. I'm excited to see your math numbers next year.
Yeah.
Track that.
I will.
Yeah.
Don't worry. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we through everything?
Ready for action.
Yeah, we're to the treasure action items. Mrs. Hatfield, will you please present your treasure action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present action items A through C for approval, please.
So moved.
There we go. Mr. O'Brien got it.
Mrs. Speel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Barnes?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rafe, your superintendent action items?
Do we have any we're going to pull out?
No.
Okay. Just checking. So I will present superintendent action items A through B, please, for approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll. Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, wait, if that's everything, so now, I will make a motion. Was it yours? To move to executive session in order, as permitted by Section 121.22 Ohio Revised Code, to consider the employment of public employees. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Mrs. Hatfield?
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?